Good evening, this is Rastaksham Zaka. Jacob, there is huge speculation around the new five-day session of Parliament that's been called by the Modi government. The opposition is saying that this is unconstitutional. What is the need for calling this special session? And this has been timed to the India Alliance meeting that is beginning in Mumbai. Between today and tomorrow, they are going to be convening the India Alliance meeting. So, the opposition is saying that this is a convenient tactic to try and distract from that meeting. The government says this is an attempt to try and discuss or usher in Amritkar, something that has been a pet subject for the Prime Minister and for the rest of his government. But ultimately, there's a lot of speculation during the rounds about what kind of bills can be introduced in this special session of Parliament. After all, special sessions have been called for very, very specific purposes. The last major one was the GST session of Parliament in which a historic indirect tax legislation was passed. So, what may be that one big game changer bill that could be introduced in this session? Could it be the One Nation, One Poll as speculation is rife around that? Could it be the Women's Reservation Bill? Again, speculation is rife around that. Could it be UCC? In fact, sections within the BJP themselves are saying that UCC for now is in the cold storage. So, what was the pressing need for this special five-day Parliament session? And that too, we're given to understand from the new Parliament building. And more importantly, as the opposition is claiming, is this simply to divert attention from the coming together of 26 parties they claim is rattling the BJP and the NDA? But first, the story.
अचानक क्या जरूरी स्थिति पायदा हो गए कि बिना पूछे, बिना साला, बिना मसवारा इस तरीके की सदन बुलाने की नौबत आ गई?
निश्चित रूप से यह एक Modi ji की घबराहट साफ़ तौर पर दिखाई पड़ रही है। तीन राज्यों के चुनाव BJP हारने जा रही है, जिससे यह one nation, one election की बात कर रहा है।
यही इनकी हिंदुत्ववादी सोच है कि जो यहीं इतना बड़ा त्योहार जो दिवाली की तरह बनाया जाता है, देश के कोने-कोने में ज्यादा, विदेशों में भी बनाया जाता है और आप उस समय की session में बुलवा रहे हैं, क्या इसकी साधारण पर बुलवाया जाना है?
Session बुलाया गया है, क्यों बुलाया गया है? और यह budget session, non-session तो हो चुका है, तो सितंबर में दूसरा session, क्या ऐसी urgency है?
अब इन्होंने जनपति की अत्याचार में, सबको त्योहार से भी जनपति की आराधाना कर रहे थे कि जो कार्यकाल होता है, उस 11 दिन में इन्होंने अपना अधिवेशन लगाया। यह इनका हिंदुत्व।
It's a bit of a surprise. I was not expecting this. We don't know what the government wants to do. One rumor is maybe the government wants to dissolve the Lok Sabha and call elections early because they are afraid of losing in five states in November, December.
All right, so is the government planning for an early election? Is the government planning to bring in this One Nation, One Poll bill? There's a lot of speculation. And like I said at the top, this is right now purely and purely in the realm of speculation. No one is confirming this, no one is denying this either. So, let's talk about some of these bills that the government could potentially bring. One of course is this One Nation, One Poll bill. It's a special and almost a pet subject of the Prime Minister and the BJP. Whether or not they will bring it, we'll have to wait and see. The Centre could also possibly table the Women's Reservation Bill. Remember, the last time it was brought was when the fag end of the UPA era, the UPA government unfortunately did not pass because many of the North Indian Mandal parties, whether it was RJD, SP etc., had opposed that. The Centre may also possibly bring in the Uniform Civil Code. Again, this is one of the three core issues for the BJP. But then, can they bring in the constitutional amendments to amend the constitution to bring in the Uniform Civil Code? So, these are the three bills around which there is speculation. But also, the fact is that special sessions of Assembly of the Parliament have been called in under very, very extraordinary circumstances. Now, the One Nation, One Poll bill, if it were to be brought at all, and like I said, this is right now solely in the realm of speculation, it needs an amendment to the 1951 Representation of People's Act, which means that two-thirds of the majority of Parliament needs to approve it. Also, 50% of all states, because the Representation of People's Act applies to all state governments and for state assembly elections as well. It also requires a two-thirds majority in Parliament, which means the government will have to take the support of other like-minded parties, YSRCP, BJP, etc. So, it is easier said than done for the government to be bringing the One Nation, One Poll bill because aid requires amendment of constitution to be passed by two-thirds majority. And more importantly, it also requires 50% of all state legislatures to approve this passage of a One Nation, One Poll bill. And that is, like I said, very, very difficult at this current juncture. Now, if you go back in time and look at what were the special sessions that were called for by the various governments during the course of the last 30, 40 years? In 1962, there was a special session that was convened during the war with China. This was right after the war with China. Attilbi Hari Vajpayee was one of the leaders of the opposition at that time, and he had asked for a special session. In 1997, when India completed 50 years as an independent nation, there was the commemoration of the Golden Jubilee of Independence. A special session of Parliament was called for then. In 2012, when the 60th anniversary of the first sitting of Parliament was commemorated, there was again a special session of Parliament that was called for. In 2015, the 125th birth anniversary of Ambedkar as well as, of course, the adoption of the Constitution Day on the 26th of November, that was done in 2015. Then, of course, this was the very, very important one, highlight one. In 2017, there was a midnight session to pass a historic indirect tax legislation in the form of the Goods and Services Tax Bill. That was passed in a special midnight session that was called for in June of 2017. And thereby, the 50, 60 years of indirect tax legislations changed and we had the new regime of the Goods and Services Tax. So, right now, when we are looking at this special session of Parliament and we're given to understand this will happen from the new building of Parliament, what may be the speculation? And number two, the Opposition India Alliance, which is meeting in Mumbai, is already saying that A, there is no need for this special session and B, the only reason for bringing this special session of Parliament is to divert attention from the coming together of these opposition parties. But first, let me bring in our guests. Rajwarren Singh Rathod is Member of Parliament and spokesperson of the BJP. Madhu Gaudiyaskey is a national spokesperson of the Congress Party, former Member of Parliament. Dr. Shantanu Sen is Member of Parliament and National spokesperson of the TMC. Pavan K. Verma is former Member of Parliament and diplomatic expert. Let me start with Rajwarren Singh Rathod. Again, today, an announcement from the Parliamentary Affairs Minister that there will be a five-day special session from the new Parliament building to discuss Amritkar, no further details. The Opposition India Alliance, which is meeting in Mumbai, Mr. Rathod is saying that they want, the government is doing this because it is unnerved, it is showing a sense of nervousness because of the India Alliance coming together and this is a best way to try and divert the headlines. Your response?
It is the prerogative of the government to call for a parliamentary session and it is for the political parties, especially those who are elected, to come to the Parliament and make any of the law which is important for the country. And once it is a law, that's the only thing that can be executed in the country to serve the people of this country. I think it is the first mandate for anyone who's been elected to not hold a meeting in Mumbai but to be present in the Parliament. Having said that, we are not interfering in any of the announced programs of this so-called INDIAA. And this is at a time when there's, like I mentioned, there's none of the programs announced. So firstly, this, no one is unnerved and it is important. Now, just coming to this INDIAA, which is a collaboration of these selfish parties, having calling themselves INDIAA, trying to take all the best of the India, is not going to serve them any purpose because they are aimless, they are shameless and they are faceless. They are aimless because their only agenda is themselves and no vision for the country. They are shameless because they have been continuously targeting each other for decades and now they have come together. So, today, they are holding each other's hand. Tomorrow, they will be holding each other's throat. And that is a reality, it's already showing. So, they are, and they are faceless as well because who is going to lead the country? They have no vision, they have no agenda, they have no face.
Okay.
Each of them has been going to the town stating that they have a prime ministerial candidate. So, no one is unnerved. I think they need to realize that their first objective is to work for the nation and that's where the Parliament comes in.
Okay, so the India Alliance is nameless, faceless, shameless. Madhu Gaudiyaskey, coming back to, you know, the declaration of a special session of Parliament. You know, governments are well within their right to call for special sessions. The GST was passed in a special session. The Constitution Day Resolution was passed in a special session. In 1997, when India completed 50 years as an independent republic, again, there was a special session, the Congress was part of it. Why are you opposed to this five-day special session that's been called by the Modi government?
Zaka, question is the timing. Why sudden announcement today when the INDIAA parties are meeting? And it's very unfortunate to hear my good friend Rajwarren, who was a former army man and then a volunteer and using such a language being in a Member of Parliament, former minister. In a democracy, you have an equal right and opposition party's responsibility to raise the people's concern and what people are looking for it. It's the duty of the opposition parties. And this is shows mere arrogance of the ruling party and the timing. We, as Mr. Rahul Gandhi said it, this is a clear diversion tactics, steal away the publicity or the response getting from the people of India for this responsible opposition parties. Some of the names which is, or Mr. Rajwarren just calling nameless, shameless. I think Mr. Nitish ji was with them till recently. And you are insulting the leaders who are with you. Mohammed ji, the Chief Minister of West Bengal, was former alliance of NDA. This is uncalled for in the parliamentary democracy. Two, this is a clear strategy of the government to divert the attention of the biggest scam, the Adani buying shares, their own shares by themselves against the SEBI rules, which 25% has to be in the public domain. Where are that money is coming? They're buying their own shares on Benamis, who are the former directors of the Adani companies. And second, they've seen the INDIAA name itself is shattering them, shaking them. Zaka, you listed why this, when the special sessions were called earlier, when they, is it a national emergency or a national celebration were called? This session, special session, why opposition is questioning the timing and their intention? Both are illogical against constitutional and this only cover up their scams and their arrogance, which is stubbornness are showing by my good friend.
So, Madhu, Madhu, let me ask, let me ask. No, no, please explain to our viewers, our viewers are watching this. Millions of people are watching this tonight. A, what is unconstitutional? Because my understanding is governments are well within their right. Even Congress, when it was in power, has brought in special sessions of Parliament, including in 1962 when Pandit Nehru was the Prime Minister, right? So, what is unconstitutional about this special session? Secondly, as Colonel Rathod said, no, no, as Colonel Rathod said, you know, it is not like the special session is impeding the India Alliance meetings. This special session has been announced today but it will convene on the 18th of September. The India Alliance meetings will get over by Friday, Friday night by Saturday. So, why are you saying that the India Alliance meetings will get impeded by the special session that's been called for?
They could have waited for another day, Zaka. Why I'm saying unconstitutional? When we were in power, I was a ten years Member of Parliament. There's when the national emergency, national calamity, it is the Prime Minister Manmohan Singh used to meet Advaniji, LOP, or Sushma ji, or Arun Jatli ji. Have you seen any single attempt by Narendra Modi ji to meet the opposition leaders? Is it not necessary under the Constitution of India to respect the opposition, the dissent voice? Is it not necessary even if it's a women's bill or if you want to bring elections together for assembly in Parliament to take every party into confidence, which they have not done it? This is shows that, why I'm saying it's unconstitutional? Because you don't respect the constitution.
Okay, no, so, one thing I want to clarify. One thing I want to clarify for our viewers. Right now, none of these bills have been confirmed or denied by anybody from government, whether it is One Nation, One Poll Constitutional Amendment Bill, whether it is Women's Reservation Bill or UCC or any of this. None of this has been confirmed or set with any sort of authority by anyone from government. All of this is in the realm of speculation. So, let me ask Colonel Rathod, let me ask Colonel Rathod to please respond. If you're bringing such momentous bills, then should you not take the opposition into conference before calling for or announcing the special session of Parliament?
See, a lot of times, Jacob, some of these spokespeople, and I'm sorry to say this from Madhu, he's a dear friend, some of these spokespersons and especially Congress is known to speak through their hat. So, even if there's been a conversation, there's been a discussion, they would deny it. You know, this is somehow become the norm for Congress. I'm not personally aware of a conversation but I'm sure that conversations take place, number one. Number two, I want to ask my friend Madhu that if it's a special session, there would be a requirement, a necessity that the session is called. It's not an ordinary session and therefore there's an extraordinary circumstance. If there is an extraordinary circumstance in this country and we all get elected, yet you've been elected Member yourself, Madhu, if we all get elected, our primary objective is to sit in the Parliament and debate, discuss and finally select a path that is best suited for this country. So, why are you making such a hue and cry for this very basic and important fact? I can't understand that.
Okay, so, so, let me, let me, let me bring in.
Let's put it this way, let me answer.
No, no, let me, let me bring in Pavan Verma as well as Shantanu Sen. Both of them have been waiting patiently. Pavan Verma, let me, let me move on to the more material question and this is, again, opposition is speculating around this. No confirmation from government on. This is just a ploy or a ruse to bring in early elections. That somehow the government feels that if they were to go into the December elections of the five states, you know, Chhattisgarh, Madhya Pradesh, Rajasthan, from where Colonel Rathod hails from, and if the situation is not favorable in some of these states for the BJP, then it's better to club the national elections, the general elections with these state elections and then in the mood of the nation, Mr. Modi will and his government will sail through. Do you buy that? Do you buy this whole speculation that this whole thing is a ruse for calling for early elections?
Frankly, Zaka, I don't. Because it would be counterproductive for the BJP to coincide the polls with assembly elections where it may lose some of them. There's going to be a tight fight in Madhya Pradesh and in Chhattisgarh, the Congress is likely to win. However, I think the government A, has the constitutional prerogative to convene a special session. We cannot doubt that. Whether there should have been consultation in advance with the opposition? Ideally, yes, but in the current circus situation where all trust between the treasury benches and the opposition has broken down completely, I don't believe those consultations would bear any fruit.
Okay.
Thirdly, is it a diversionary tactic for the meeting of the India Alliance? Perhaps it could be, but it doesn't materially matter because the India Alliance will continue to meet and as you rightly said, the special session of Parliament is not coinciding with any India Alliance meeting as we know today. Fourthly, I think the government is in a hurry to finish or bring in or introduce or show the intent to be serious about certain unfinished business in Parliament.
Like what?
The last session was a washout although the government, I'm coming to that. The last session was a washout because the government did pass some bills. But there is, there are other bills like, for instance, the Uniform Civil Code, for which the government has been accused of propounding it, proposing it, but not even coming yet with a draft. And therefore, it can be accused of not showing what it intended to do. Maybe we'll see a draft of the UCC.
Okay.
Secondly, you have the One Nation, One Law, One Election Proposal, which I think has the support of the maximum number of people in the country because the frequency of elections is much too high in this country and impede governance. Thirdly, the Criminal Indian Penal Code Amendment Act is there. And any other issue the government feels it needs to expedite in advance of the elections just in case there is an eventuality where the winter session has to be either curtailed or elections are pre-pone. As of now, my feeling is the government will not pre-pone the elections by more than one month or six weeks at the most.
Okay, and that is primarily, of course, the April-May election would have meant, you know, holding elections in the peak of summer and that may not be the best time for people to turn up in large numbers. So, that's, that's possible. But let me ask Dr. Shantanu Sen this. You know, why I don't buy into the speculation of any of these difficult legislations, whether it is One Nation, One Poll or whether it is UCC, is because it involves amendment of the constitution by two-thirds majority in both houses and also it involves 50% of state legislatures to weigh in. 50% of state legislatures have to approve this and that's not easy. Is it possible, and this is why, this is where I feel the opposition may be missing a trick or maybe, you know, barking up the wrong tree. Is it possible, and you look at the tweet of the Parliamentary Affairs Minister, it simply says, "Special session, new Parliament building to discuss Amritkar." Is it possible, Dr. Sen, that this is simply to, you know, lord and pass resolutions on the successful conduct of the G20, the successful launch of the Chandrayaan mission to the moon and the other important things that have happened in the last few days and weeks?
See, with all humility, I would like to remind you that your house has been informed by your party that particularly on this ground, our party stand will be made clear by our party's supreme, Madam Momta Beraj.
Sure, fair enough.
So, I don't speak anything on this right now. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, okay. No, what I do want to know is, this special session of Parliament, what is your... Okay, all right, I believe Dr. Shantanu Sen has taken off his earpiece, but we'll, we'll see. My, my question was a very generic one about the special session of Parliament. But Madhu Gaudiyaskey, let me come back to this, this whole speculation that's doing the rounds. You've been talking about, you know, this is to divert attention from the India meetings, this is to divert attention from the Adani issue. But fact of the matter is, none of this, Madhu Gaudiyaskey, cuts ice with the fact that this is going to happen two weeks from now, three weeks from now. And frankly, a special five-day session, A, the government is well within its right and B, more importantly, is going to come immediately on the back of what we saw, you know, whether it is the Chandrayaan launch, the successful one, whether it is the G20 meeting that's going to conclude in about 10 days' time from now. This could simply be, as we saw in 1997, the special session convening to lord India for 50 years as an independent republic. This could just well be to usher in Amritkar as the government claims.
That's exactly my point, Zaka. As you said, to discuss, to celebrate the 50th year of independence. Why there is a secrecy? Why the government is not revealing why it is? What is Amritkar? When 300 million people still below poverty, thousands of, lakhs of people, youth of the country are, have no jobs, price rise and these camps of Adani. Why there is secrecy? Why the government is not revealing? That's exactly my point is. What is the big secrecy about it? When you're calling for special session, is it Chandrayaan you can still talk about it? G20 you can still reveal about it? Our speaker can call the main opposition parties and there's the chief ministers in this INDIAA meet and my friend calling them shameless and faceless. Isn't it a sheer arrogance? Is that way to speak or demand the opposition parties, the leaders of opposition parties who spend their lifetime to serving this country? So, this exactly shows their arrogance, that's exactly my point is.
No, no, but Madhu, you are a veteran, you are a veteran parliamentarian. Sir, sir, you do know that the agenda of whatever session is being called for is shared when the Business Advisory Council of both houses meet and that hasn't happened yet, it'll happen before the session begins. Secondly, as you are well aware, before every session of Parliament, there is an all-party meeting and that is convened by the Prime Minister. And presumably, this session will also have an all-party meeting convened by the Prime Minister. So, I don't understand where this attack that, oh, we are not consulted, this is just a dictatorial government, they're just doing their whims and fancies and so on. Where is that coming from?
This is, this is not regular, this is not regular winter session, hard budget session, Zaka. This is a special session. Exactly the point, why the special session is called for? Why can't reveal it? If something is, it's not partitioned, right? Celebrating Chandrayaan, it's a saluting scientist, it's a, it's not, doesn't belong to which political party they are. It's a duty of every citizen to respect the scientists.
Okay.
If it is, what Amritkar they're talking about? If G20, it's India representing, it's not just the BJP or Narendra Modi ji is doing it. It's a pride to the country. So, why there is secrecy? This is a special session, that's my point.
Okay, so, Colonel Rathod, I think you need to respond to that.
Can't you say that or reveal it to the, at least to the media?
If this is about Amritkar, about Chandrayaan, about G20, it's about the nation, all of us, you know, irrespective of political differences and affiliations, need to celebrate this as Indians. So, why are you shrouding this in secrecy? That's the question from Madhu.
Sure, Jacob, I hope that a large audience is watching this because this is ironical and strange that a party like Congress is fearing just coming to the Parliament. A Parliament session has been called and Congress is fearing it. It's very strange. Number two, my friend Madhu has been speaking about a business person and he says it is because of diversion. Now, tell me, we are in August and this is 2023. So many sessions have gone by, did they not get an opportunity to raise this issue? Or were they not present in the Parliament? So, I mean, what are we talking about? And if we are coming together to whether speak about G20 or Chandrayaan success or Amritkar, that how are we going to prepare for the next 25 years? I think that is going to be, that should be welcomed and appreciated that we are asking for a collaborative effort of everyone to discuss the next 25 years if that be so, right? And Jacob, you rightly mentioned that there's a, there's a meeting that is held just because, just before the session starts where the agenda is discussed. And lastly, let me say, because Madhu has repeated it twice, individually, I'm not calling any of these political parties or their leaders aimless, faceless and shameless. I am saying this, this because they are coming together whereas they are absolutely contradictory to each other and they're coming together only for one purpose. Let's oppose Modi. He is too big, he acts too fast, his scale is too big, we can't handle him alone. He's going after corrupt, we will not survive, so let us come together. That is what I'm calling aimless, shameless and faceless.
Okay, I'll give Pavan Verma the final word. Is that what it is ultimately boiling down to? That all of these alliance partners have come together not because they see eye to eye on every issue, not because they have a common minimum program and frankly, so far, I haven't seen any evidence of it, not because they have an alternative vision to offer to the, to the people of India, but they simply want to oppose this one man, Narendra Modi and his government over the last nine years for all its ills of omission and commission as they see it and will that cut ice with the people of India? Because you go back electorally in history where strong, powerful governments have been dethroned, as it were. I'm sorry, I'm using a very monarchical word here. But whether it was '77, whether it was '89, you had a grouping of parties coming together and offering something different to the current status quo, as it were. I'm still not sure what is it that the India Alliance is offering different from what we have seen in the, in the last decade of the Modi rule?
Okay, Zaka, let me sum it up the way I see it. First of all, the fact that the opposition is seeking to unite, I feel is good for a democracy. I feel is good for a democracy because a democracy needs a strong opposition. But I'm giving you five criteria to judge the ability of this alliance in terms of impact and effectiveness. First, the intent, unity, it gets a tick mark. Then the goal, defeat the BJP, that gets a tick mark. Then the timeline. Now this is too late in the day when elections are six months away. Fourthly, the ability to come together in an effective manner, too slow. The first meeting is held in June in Patna. The next meeting is held almost a month later in Bengaluru in July. The third meeting is held after five weeks, in, in, in the end of August, beginning of September. And lastly, cohesion. I think that by now, given the time available, there should have been already a common minimum program on the table to be discussed and finalized. There should already have become, a secretariat should have been set up. A pan-Indian narrative should have been devised. And talks on seat adjustment should have begun. So on the contrary, we find it is still a disparate group with many voices in them, still openly differing with each other. And the pace of bringing a cohesion which is going to convince the voters and a narrative that appeals to them over and above the popularity of Prime Minister Modi. I think that is lacking and we are literally months away from the code of conduct and the coming of the next election.
Okay, thank you very much for this fascinating conversation, Pavan Verma, Madhu Gaudiyaskey, and Colonel Rajawarden Rathod, as of course, Dr. Shantanu Sen, who couldn't join us. But we'll leave it at that. We'll see how this plays out for the India alliance, for the BJP and the NDA. But I'm fascinated by this announcement of a five-day special session. There have been instances in the past, as I outlined at the top of the program, where special sessions of parliament have been called for. Joining us now is a senior constitutional law expert, senior Member of Parliament, Dr. Abhishik Manu Singhvi of the Congress. Thank you very much. The special session of parliament, Dr. Singhvi, that's been called for by the government. I want to understand from you, there is constitutionally nothing that is not binding on the government. There is nothing that prevents the government from calling for a special session of parliament. That is what they have, they have called for. There's a lot of speculation about whether this will involve the One Nation, One Law poll, whether this will involve the Women's Reservation poll. I just want to understand from you as a lawyer and a constitutional expert, the legal and the legislative hurdles for some of these bills. Because whatever it is, the agenda for this special session has to be pretty significant. Because otherwise, what's the compelling need to call for a special session?
Well, my first point is what, you know, we might sometimes call a preliminary objection. Why should it be a matter of speculation as to what I think might be going on or you think might be going on? Why do we do this in Chinese whispers, through media leaks? You are having a parliament session, well, upfront, you're supposed to have a parliament session. Why not declare the agenda when you declare the session? Clearly, these are inspired media leaks. So I think that to be considered more than media leaks, they should be considered unofficial versions given to the media. Why do it in stealth? Why do it with minimum notice? Why do it with minimum opportunity? Why try and catch people by surprise? Is this just part of some kind of a game? That's point one. Point two is, based upon these Chinese whispers and well-intentioned, well-targeted so-called media leaks, you have three things floating around. The first and foremost is synchronized polls. Again, in the same way as you did the previous methodology, the how question, what manner, overdramatize, stealthily, quietly, surreptitiously. Same way, do you really address yourself to the nitty-gritty questions as you know? It's the nitty-gritty that both God and devil reside. You tell the nation how you're going to get the two-thirds majority for constitutional amendments? Or are you suggesting that you can do it without a constitutional amendment? Do you tell the country how in non-NDA states, in non-NDA states, I'm sorry, you are going to get in a non-NDA state, let us say like Karnataka, which has had a heavy electoral battle a few months ago?
Okay.
Are you going to force, suppose you are the chief minister there? Am I going to force you to have a dissolution?
So, Dr. Singhvi, the speculation seems to be around this whole pet issue, this pet subject, if you will, of One Nation, One Poll. Now, it's easier said than done. I've outlined the reasons about, you know, two-thirds majority for a constitutional amendment, fifty percent of the legislatures have to approve it. So please explain to our viewers, constitutionally speaking, how easy or difficult would be, would it be to get this One Nation, One Poll bill passed? If at all, that is the agenda for which this special session has been called, which, like I said, we have no confirmation about?
You see, first and foremost, let's be clear that India was not born when the Modi government came in. This proposal has been around from pre-Mister Advani. I remember the first time I read it was Mr. Advani's very strong proposal. Over the years, parliamentary committees, election commission, law commissions have discussed it. Why has it not been implemented? Have you ever thought that it's possibly unfeasible? Possibly impossible in a country the size and diversity of India?
Hmm hmm.
Are you just saying, we have to do it? Tell me how to do it, good, bad, or ugly. Don't tell me whether I should do it or whether it can be done.
Okay.
Is that the question? The question should be, let's discuss with an open mind whether it should be done. Well, on the should part, there are a lot of issues. The two main ones are that if you do, you know, it sounds very great, one nation. Why not one nation, one set of clothes, one nation, one language, one nation, one beard? It sounds excellent. It gives you a great sense of power and nationalism.
Okay.
But you know, the point of democracy is that the cacophony and the chaos and the diversity of democracy is itself what is its strength. And today, I personally believe that you might tinker with a lot of things. You might do a lot of brainstorming, you might do a lot of energy and money wastage.
Sure.
And end up with a dud idea because you can't really implement this.
All right, we'll leave it at that, Dr. Singhvi. We'll see how this plays out in the upcoming special session of parliament. For the meanwhile, thank you very much for joining us and explaining the constitutional and legal hurdles that need to be crossed. If at all, this is the legislative agenda for this special session.